Okay, if I can get everyone to take their seats. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council. This is Tuesday, July 5th, 2016. It is 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Homdahl.
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. And please rise, remove any hats, if you're wearing hats, for the invocation by Mary Harvey.
Good evening. First, I want to commend and thank the city council for continuing to set aside time on their agendas to reflect on the deeper meaning of these meetings beyond decisions about ordinances, policies, reports, codes, and numbers. Every discussion, every action taken in these meetings affects the lives of all the people who live in our city. This is the dilemma of public service. To balance the needs and wishes of those whom you hear from all the time with the needs and wishes of those from whom you never hear. To view the needs and wishes of those who are experiencing good fortune, stability, and safety in their lives as equally important as the needs and wishes of those who are experiencing unfortunate circumstances, instability, and the daily challenges to just have a place to live and to put food on their table. When the city's leaders and staff have patience, kindness, and compassion in their hearts, there is harmony here in City Hall that radiates out to our city as a whole. This is the greatest service that can be offered to the residents of Lompoc. In closing, I'd like to read a short quote about kindness. Kindness is the quality of being friendly, generous, and considerate. I believe kindness is a choice that we can all make all the time if we choose to. Kindness is a special way of acting that is unselfish and morally ethical. After you do an act of kindness, you feel it inside you, and you feel strong and proud of yourself. Kindness not only makes you feel good, but makes others around you feel great, too. Being kind means you also have to be willing to sacrifice your needs to lift people up. If everyone was lifted up by each other's kindness, imagine the world and what it would be like now. Remember, kindness might start small, but it will always grow, so let's all be kind to one another. And that was written by Connor, who is 10 years of age, and I'm hoping someday he'll be sitting where you are.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Okay, please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have your seat? You may notice a different setup we have this evening. We're gonna maybe be jockeying a little bit tonight, getting a little used to this, but this is our attempt, one of our attempts, to allow the citizens to speak directly to the council, and also, it's a better, you know, since we have a new camera right up here, people that are viewing on television will have a better view of the speaker and the audience, so looking forward to doing this. Okay, moving right along, we are going to have a presentation. It's a presentation by the Triducan Dinner Club. They'll be presenting a donation to the Lompoc Public Library. If we could have, yeah, we're, okay, so if the Triducans can come up there and then have the library director, so, okay, I'm gonna go down there with them.
Mayor, council, staff, and residents of Lompoc, my name is Janelle Osborne, and I am currently the president of the Triducan Dinner Group. In 2003, five couples, including Mayor Bob Lingle and Councilmember Dwayne Homdahl, had a dinner conversation about the state, county, and city funding cuts that were happening at our libraries, and feared these important community services wouldn't stay open to meet the needs of our community. An idea was brought forward about, let's have a unique dinner menu, maybe an auction fundraiser, see what happens. The Triducan Dinner Group officially hatched with this successful event, with the original menu inspiring the name. The group evolved over the past 13 years with wood-fired pizza events, wine raffles, speakeasy dinner, and most recently, the Spirit of Generosity event honoring a community member who defines giving back to Lompoc. With over $180,000 raised along the way, proceeds from the Triducan Dinner Group have shared equally by the Library Foundation and the Friends of the Library. Every year, the Library Foundation funding was utilized to increase endowments for books at the Lompoc and Village Libraries. In the early years, the Friends of the Library funding was used for summer reading programs, books and magazines for the Friends of the Library, for the Village Library, downloadable audiobooks, enhancements for public computers, multiple copies of bestsellers at both the Village Library and Lompoc's main library, and a new book drop as well as other equipment upgrades. Recently, funds have provided for storage units, wall-mounted magazines, popcorn machines for the children's programs, an area rug in the main library area, special equipment to resurface damaged DVDs, wall-mounted laptop shelving and seating in the teen and adult fiction areas, RFID technology for the Village Library, receipt printers at checkout, lounge chairs and tables at the main library, and a half-wall between the youth and teen areas. This year, the Triducan Dinner Group is proud to present not one but two checks directly to the Lompoc Library as a city department. The first check is from our traditional annual speakeasy dinner and dance fundraiser in the amount of $10,000, to be used by the library as needed to improve services, the environment, and/or expand programs. Thank you to all the members of the group for their hard work and dedication to the Lompoc Library system over the 13 years. These members include Linial and Carol White, Bob and Regina Lingle, Dwayne and Bonnie Homdahl, Stan and Lisa Hart, Jim and Ann Jimenez, Ed and Ramona Casares, Jim and Laurie Beck, John and Helen Free, Dennis and April Barker, Steve and Kathy Pepe, and Jason and Janelle Osborne. Now, the second check is a really important and very special donation. Our group is transitioning away from the very traditional fundraisers and is proud to introduce, for the first time, a Spirit of Generosity Award. In the amount of $5,500, the first Spirit of Generosity Award honors Al Walker. Al Walker was a great contributor to Lompoc and supported too many events, organizations, and causes to list, and is a perfect first honorary for the Spirit of Generosity Award. We would like to thank all of Al's friends in the Stillman Gang for contributing to the special event and raising these funds. Al's friends asked that the funds be used to make improvements to the main library patio area, where a plaque in Al's, Walker's honor will be placed upon completion. The library is such an important part of a vibrant and supportive city, and we are glad that it is finally a firm member of the city under its own department. The Triducan Dinner Group is proud to support the betterment of Lompoc and Vandenberg Village Libraries through fundraising and activities and public awareness. Sarah, our public librarian, here are two checks totaling $15,000 and $500. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I say a few things? I know. Thank you, this is amazing, I'm so excited. The library appreciates all of the Triducans and the support they've given us over the years, and that other members of the community have given by supporting the Triducans. I remember when I first started working at the library, and someone was telling me this story, and I was amazed to hear that this little group started because they wanted to support the local library, and this is how they did it, by serving Triducan, which I have never had, not really interested in. No offense. Over the years, it's grown into this huge group of supporters, and the library's benefited in all the ways Janelle just said. I was actually gonna hit some of them, but now I don't need to, because she gave you all of it. But one of the things I do want to, since I'm here, say is the summer reading program, that the Triducans have helped over the years to support programs, and right now, there's still time to sign up, and we're doing all ages, so we have lots of great prizes, a lot of them from local businesses that have donated them to us to give away as prizes. The summer reading program is for all ages, so if you have children or teens especially, this is a fun way to help them continue to read during summer vacation. We've had amazing participation this year, a 70% increase over last year, so we are so happy about that, and we know that the community supports us, that the Triducans have contributed to wonderful programs for our community. With these donations tonight, yes, we will be making some improvements in our patio area and in our children's area that will make the space more comfortable and more usable for our community members, so thank you very much. And I would also like to thank the mayor and the city council for bringing us in as a city department for the library and showing your commitment to literacy and education and lifelong learning in our community. Our library is a much-used and much-loved resource in our community. Our computers are used over 50,000 times a year, 50,000. We circulated over 260,000 items this year, which is actually a 9% increase over our last year, and over 8,000 children, teens, and adults attended a program this year, which is an 18% increase. This community and its leaders value and support our library, which is evident in the generosity of the community and the Triducans in particular. Thank you so much, and all the time spent, the money raised, I am so appreciative of that, that you and that the Triducans and our community believe in our community enough to support our library. Thank you. Thank you so much.
This is where we're gonna try to figure out how we're gonna work this thing logistically, but I'm gonna be reading two proclamations shortly. Okay, I need Mr. Fred Holmes to come forward. And Fred, I think in this, if you just turn around and face the audience, because this is really, it's honoring you, so.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a proclamation honoring Fred Holmes. Whereas Fred Holmes is being honored in recognition of his many years of dedication to the Lompoc Police Department, and whereas Fred has been dedicated, has been a dedicated volunteer at the Lompoc Police Department as background investigator for the past 17 years, and whereas Fred has made an enormous contribution to the department volunteering roughly 24,000 hours and completing 11,000 background investigations, and whereas Fred served in the United States Air Force and retired as a chief master sergeant, and whereas Fred has brightened the lives of many volunteering as the Shriners' clown. Now therefore I, now therefore I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of City of Lompoc, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend this proclamation in honor of Fred Holmes in recognition of his tireless commitment to the Lompoc Police Department and always so generously giving back to his hometown community. Thank you.
So I just want to say just a couple of quick words. As Mary, Mary talked about invocation about kindness, you could not find a kinder man than Fred Holmes. I remember listening to him interview potential candidates for employment, and really, it was an interrogation, but they didn't know it, because he was so kind. And Fred, we're not gonna give you $15,500 like the library, sorry about that. But I just want to say, yeah, I just want to say, if you think about it, 23,000 hours is, equates to millions of dollars in savings for the city, so it's really a loss, but, you know, Fred has stuff to do, and we're gonna miss him. We are gonna call you a lot, though, Fred, so thank you for letting me say some words.
Okay, and now this next one is really special. Many of you may recall that a couple of months ago, I had the real honor of reading a proclamation for Danny Duffy, who brought the first World Series to the city of Lompoc. Well, today, I'm gonna be reading a proclamation. There's representatives of the Lompoc High School Girls' Varsity Softball Team in recognition of the team winning the California Interclassical Federation Southern California Division V title. This is the first softball title, I believe, that has come to Lompoc. So if I can get the girls and the coaches to come up, and then we're gonna have parents and, Coach Boomerzbach, or, Coach, Principal Boomerzbach, you can come up, too. So what I'd like to do here, again, is have the girls sort of line up in front of the First of all, really, congratulations. I think I mentioned to you out there, you've really made the city very, very proud. You may not, I think you think it's a great thing, but I mean, it is wonderful for our city. So honoring the Lompoc High School Girls' Varsity Softball Team for winning a 2016 CIF championship. Whereas on June 4th, 2016, Lompoc High School Girls' Softball Team brought home the 2016 CIF Southern Sectional Championship. And whereas the Lompoc Braves defeated the Louisville Royals 3 to 0 in the championship game after finishing the regular season at 23 and 7. And whereas, Lompoc High School Girls' Softball, after three appearances at the CIF finals in '76, '79, and 2001, have now won their first CIF Southern Sectional Championship. And whereas, head coach McKenna Martin has now won his first CIF Southern Sectional Championship. Now therefore I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of City of Lompoc, California, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend the proclamation to the Lompoc High School Girls' Varsity Softball Team in recognition of their winning the 2016 CIF Southern Section Championship. Congratulations, girls. Are there any parents that want to come up? Parents, any parents? Parents want, we're gonna get some photos, maybe? Okay? If parents want to come up, otherwise, just take some photos, so. You know, there's bad times sitting in those chairs, but times like this, it makes up for everything. City manager's report, top that.
I'm not sure I can, so I'm not going to try. First of all, on your agenda was listed that we would be introducing firefighter Gregory Herrera. However, we wasted no time in dispatching him and a crew, loaning them out to the deer fire. They did return safely today, but they are pretty exhausted, so we're going to introduce firefighter Herrera at our next meeting. But I was going to ask the police chief, Pat Walsh, to come up and give us a report on our activities over the holiday weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. So we were going to start our fireworks enforcement on the 30th, but the celebration started a lot earlier than that. So we put out a two-person car starting on the 23rd every night until last night, just for short bursts of time, four-hour spots. We have issued 11 citations, and we had 191 calls for service that reported illegal fireworks and 20 additional reports of illegal fireworks on our police app. So some of the things we learned from this year is, I think we need to do public service announcements. We did that ahead of time, but I think we need to really be a little more thoughtful about it in June, or even probably before that, because a lot of people will go buy their stuff before July 4th, obviously. And then I think next year, we'll probably deploy officers, maybe either in undercover cars, because the first couple of days, they took out patrol cars, because we didn't have any undercover cars, and, you know, they're looking for us, so. And then the other thing is, is now we have a matrix of all the addresses that we're using those illegal fireworks, so next year, we'll be a little more targeted, so that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Great job.
And that's gonna conclude my report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that will bring us to public comment on the consent calendar. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything on the consent Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close public comment on the consent calendar, and we'll bring it back to the council. For your information, the consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered to be routine, and they'll be passed with one motion by the council, unless the council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member choose to pull an item? Okay, seeing no one wishing to pull anything, may I have a motion?
I'll move the three on the consent items. I believe it's three.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Please vote. That passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, staff presentations, announcing, announcements and requests, okay. Any staff presentations? We have Brad Wilke, Management Services Director. We'll give a presentation on ratepayer revenue versus non-ratepayer revenue.
Mayor, council members, I have a brief presentation on this, but I also have, is being handed out and was available for the public, what I call a white paper on the subject, which has a little bit more information than the presentation. I'm not expecting anybody to read through it during my presentation to ask questions. It's for your reading pleasure, and if you have some questions, comments, concerns about it, I see this as a continuing conversation and an educational opportunity for everybody involved. I'm just gonna go through the presentation real quick. There's two different items that were brought up as wanting some more information coming back to the council. One is the revenue categories for utilities, primarily the electric utility, and also a couple of the street lighting classifications of, in the rates. This is a fairly stand, this is an example of one of our bills, and I've highlighted in that box the rates, the charges that are attributable to the rates that are either Prop 218-driven, or in the case of electric, Prop 26. Those are basically the revenues that are, for the city, ratepayer charges, because that's what's directly attributable to Prop 218. There are some other charges, this person just happens to have some donations and also some statutory fees that are paid to the state or for mandated programs, the public benefit program. In the white paper, there's some information on public benefit programs, because they're funded by a specific charge that's authorized by AB 1890 and successor legislation. And there's also some information, although it's not directly related to electric, about programs that are in the water utility, which, after the passage of Prop 218, ratepayer charges can't be used for discount programs and things like that, but non-ratepayer amounts can be, such as interest. And I go into that a little bit in the staff presentation in my white paper. So this is on the customer side, and then if you go to the city side, I've not really highlighted them, but these categories, service charges, the first six or seven down to municipal demand charges, and I apologize for the size of this. Those are all the rolled-up estimated revenues that we receive from customer charges that are charged through the Prop 218 and are due to consumption or use of the system. This is right out of the 1517 budget, page 155. One thing that came up as a discussion point was revenue that is related to our use of NCPA facilities. We get all of our power from NCPA, but NCPA also markets some of our resources, and we get revenue from the sales of some of our, either our assets or outright sales of energy that's produced, that's in excess of what we need here. For Prop 218 purposes, that can be utilized, because it's not revenue that's coming in from customer rates, as in the bill you saw earlier. This is a summary of the electric utility revenues over the last six or eight years, broken down between the ratepayer revenues in each of those years, and then what we're getting from either interest, service fees for turn-on, turn-offs, for the notices, as well as what I mentioned earlier, the revenue we get from, through NCPA, that's over and above the charges we have to incur to provide power to our customers. Looking at this, the average is about 10% of our revenue stream comes from charges other than bills to customers, but that goes as low as about 6.5% and as high as 15%. So it's a very variable revenue stream. So we, I say that because it's not, we can't rely on it for reducing our power costs and our rates in the future, because it, we may not get all those revenues that we think we're going to get. So, it's better to be conservative and make sure that we receive enough money through the rates to pay for our ongoing fixed and variable charges. I'm gonna stop here for a second, because I'm gonna switch gears to the second item that was requested, which was some information on the rate classifications for lighting. I'll just go to this page here. Lighting charges are for streetlights, and which are either in, along streets, or possibly along private streets. And there's also another category called OL-1, which is lighting that's outside, but not on the street. So it might be in the parks, might be in homeowners association areas that are common to their neighborhood. And the difference between what we classify as LS-1 and LS-2, primarily LS-1 is for lights that are, both the energy and the replacement of that light are the responsibility of the city. So, or, the customer who's paying for it is asking for us to provide for both the energy and the replacement. LS-2 is where, for instance, a homeowners association owns the light poles, and where they're paying us just for the energy to light the light at nighttime. They take care of the facilities themselves. Probably four, five, six years ago, we started using LEDs, and slowly was transitioning to LEDs away from high-press sodiums, but we didn't have a rate structure that was, represented what the costs were for LEDs. The electric division did an interim LS-3 rate, which was not related to LS-1 and LS-2, and to get that started. So in 2014, when we looked at the rates, we realized that LS-3 didn't allow us to bill for the customers that want to pay for the electricity and the facilities, versus the ones who just want to pay for electricity. So we, what we did in 2014, based on the council request at the time we brought the item, was to split the LS-3 and put the LED and the induction lighting in LS-1 and LS-2 for the two types of customers that we have. Full-service customers, for lack of a better term, for the whole entire system, or just energy only. So, one question was, I believe, why is the rate for lighting so high compared to the other ones? And it's primarily because of this component that is in, highlighted in blue, circled in blue. Those are the costs that are related to the fixture cost of maintaining the lights, the replacement of the LED lights themselves, the control mechanisms, the computer boards, all that kind of stuff, the Cobra arms, everything. And that just was not included in the original LS-3 rate, which is the reason why it went from roughly $5.22 for a induction light, up to $16.54 for an induction light, where the customer is asking us to pay, to provide them both energy and facilities. So, that component right there is pretty much the whole difference between what was on the LS-3 before, and is now on LS-1. And I didn't put LS-2 up here, because LS-2 is still roughly the same rate as this, because it's only paying for the energy consumption. This rate schedule, this Excel schedule, basically was provided to finance from the electric division, because we need to get their input on the number of hours that the light's running, the wattage that's being used, to determine the number of kilowatt-hours that are used on an annual basis, because these are not metered. We just estimate, based on the average number of hours that they're in operation, the amount of energy that's being used. That's easier than trying to meter 2,500 electric lights that are on about eight hours a day, on average. So, that's really just, that's all I have for the presentation. And like I said, the staff report, the memo that I handed out, the white paper that I handed out, has a lot more detail about it, and I encourage you to go read through that, and if you have any questions for me, either at a council meeting, or at some point in time when you're in the office, to ask me questions, or Melinda, or even the electric division, about how those charges are, or what the revenues are that are being used. And the one thing I'd like to mention is, for the revenue differentiation between ratepayer revenue from the bill and non-ratepayer revenue from the bill, is really related to Prop 218. The limitations that Prop 218 have on, we cannot charge for costs on the bill higher than what it is to provide that service to the customer. So, it allows us, it gives us that, a little bit of flexibility when we want to have something like a low-income or senior discount program, that's not funded by the general fund, which is something that could be done, but would rather use monies that are not otherwise used for higher priorities, such as public safety, or parks or recreation. So, that concludes my presentation.
Where are the non-ratepayer incomes, so to say? Where's that money spent? Where's it set in the budget?
The electric
Yeah, you're like
Page of the budget, we take a look at all the revenues and all the expenses, and it's, you can't, there are some that are dedicated for certain things. I'll aim at public benefits, because that's an easy one. We have a 2.85% rate that we have to charge for public benefit programs. That revenue comes in as a non-rate revenue, because it's statutory, and it's used to fund the four major programs within public benefits. So, there are several things like that, that are statutory.
Let me be more specific, then. The NCPA, so to say, profits that we get in there, where is that money expensed?
It's discretionary, right now, for Prop 218 purposes, because the expenses that are related to lighting are not a benefit that's to individual ratepayers, that it's being used to pay for that. And that is in an abundance of costs and under Prop 26, because if somebody came in and looked at it, they can say, "I'm not paying for," we can say safely that we're not paying on my utility rates for lighting on the street, because it's coming out of this rate, out of this category of revenues.
Because we have approximately $1 to $2 million a year coming from NCPA.
It's variable, yeah.
Right, and we're spending $600,000, $700,000,000 on street lighting?
Somewhere in that neighborhood, yeah.
Where's the, what's the rest of it spent on?
It's going in there, right now, for, it's, there's no dedication of that revenue to any specific program, so it's assisting us in increasing our reserves, effectively.
City Manager, did you want to?
Is that lined out in the budget as such, that it comes in? I think, my confusion is, if you look at the budget book and you see this, it's not lined out, it's in there somewhere, but having it lined out where you see where it's being directed, would seem to be a much simpler
And we've taken it under advisement, and when we get to, we're only about six months away from starting the 1719 budget, we'll be able to address that exactly, and if you have a desire to dedicate some of those funds to specific programs, we can have that as part of the budget.
It'd be good to see, because potentially, when people want to raise rates, it'd be nice to know if there is a profit up there that could be set aside in the reserve to keep from having to raise rates, or wherever it might going to be. I mean, I don't think a lot of people didn't realize that there was profits coming from NCPA, and that
I wouldn't call it profits, I would just call it, we're using our investments to benefit the utility as best we can.
Like, it does go to pay for street lighting, and I don't think a lot of people knew that that money was going from there, whatever you want to call it, other rate, other income other than rates that comes in and goes to use for street lighting. I think that's an observation that's come out here recently. I think it'd be nice to have it more lined out, so we knew, it's nice to see how much money was coming in here, but having it lined out, what's coming through NCPA, and how it's broken down, and how it's distributed.
Sure.
One of the items that we had in here recently, on the City Manager's Report from three weeks ago, there was a comment in here in the electrical section in here, where it said that we're having, where the energy union is preparing a strategy to allocate the 2015 renewable energy credits. Is that in here as well as the renewable credits?
These carbon credit auction proceeds, that's kind of what you're talking about? That amount is coming in.
Okay.
That's the estimate for what's coming in, and for us to get that, CARB required us to say, "This money will be used for X, Y, and Z." So, I believe when Marty was working on this program, the electric utility manager who was here at the time, brought a resolution, I think it was a resolution that said, "Any of these proceeds will go towards these programs." And I think some of it is going towards maintaining our geothermal facilities, because that's non-emitting, that's a non-emitting resource that we have. That's the only one I can think of off the top of my head of what that revenue's going towards, but they've
You have an itemized list, a priority list that you're using it on, right now, you're saying?
And that's there, but it's also variable, because we have this $1,191 up there, but in the last round of auctions, I think, a very small percentage of what was actually out there to be auctioned was actually bid on. So, the, we may not see that whole entire amount. So it just depends on the market, how robust it is, and right
And we use a chunk of that to buy LED streetlights, right?
That could have been one of them, I don't remember. That could have been one of the programs that was dedicated to, yes.
And if I can get to asking some questions about the LS-1 rates?
Sure.
My question was, when I looked at, in the Resolution 588 Prince's 14, you had an LED rate written down in here, and then, two months later, there was an LED rate that appeared, that was three times the rate that was presented to the council rate. And then, my question was originally, is how did we get from the one that was presented to the council, to the one that was two months later, that was three times?
Well, in looking back at the minutes of that meeting, we were given direction to make modifications to LS-1 and the OL-1 rate structure because of that. So, it was based on the request by council to make the changes that were enacted.
And what I found in there, it says that, it says that rates included in the schedules are not being modified, nor are the temporary rates set by the council, although it's being adjusted in some minor exceptions. So I didn't, I didn't see anywhere where it was set forward to go, because it's basically, it works out to .52 a kilowatt is what's being charged for these LS-1 rates.
Because you're including facilities to be replaced.
Facility, I mean, the fixtures and such?
Yes.
Okay, and maybe, maybe the numbers that were wrong that were presented to me at the CalCOG meeting, for the CalCOG meeting, they said, "Do LED, because you save a bunch of money." And they said that you're, you should have about $2.47 a month for minor expenses and repair, and your power should be about $1.88 versus $3.25 on conventional. It'd be $2.47 on LED versus $8.81, is what they said, and this came out of Cal-Edison streetlight numbers. So it seems like it's, we're, the LEDs actually hurt us, we shouldn't have probably put them in, because we ended up losing money, the costs is basically the same. We would spend a half million or $700,000 on something that was supposed to save the people money, and it, we end up tripling the rate on, and it doesn't seem to have balanced out.
Well, if you look at the monthly energy costs in this schedule, none of them are exactly the same wattage, but the energy cost for, say, the 71.4 watt is $5.17, and for the 70 watt, it's $6. So there is a, there is a savings there of about a little less than a dollar. So that, on the energy side, we are saving, we're not using as much NCPA power to do this work. So, yes, one of the things that we have to look at is who owns those facilities in the Southern Cal-Edison service territory, because if Southern Cal-Edison owns it, then they probably have a different rate than if a city owns it, for instance. There are several cities that own their own lighting besides the city.
Okay, again, getting back to what was presented to council, and I did talk with city clerk about this, and then what came down two months later, and then reading the staff report, when they, when they say that they're going to do, you know, rates included in schedules are not being modified, and then finding out that the, two months later, it was tripled. I don't, I don't see how we connect the dots between the two. I guess, they gave you the
We were given direction at the council meeting to make modifications based on that discussion. So there was an action that was requested by council to bring them back.
In watching the meeting, I didn't gather that, and I was at the meeting as well at that time in the audience, granted, but I didn't see that it was an authorization of 300% increase in that LS-1 rate. And maybe we need to bring it back for discussion, to see how we got to that point. Do we use this money as maintenance of effort money, with SB CAG, the streetlight rating?
Partially, yes.
And, I don't know, maybe we need to advance and further discussion, I'll let somebody ask some questions.
City Manager, did you have a comment?
I wanted to clarify a statement or question that was there about the use of, of non-rate revenue, and what it's paid for, and how we show it in the budget. We can certainly draw lines from revenue numbers to expense numbers, and we can choose to put artificial limits on ourselves, I guess. Unless it's an actual fee for an actual item or service, any revenues to any of the enterprises is available for any expense line item or contribution to reserves within that enterprise. I just wanted to clarify that. So, the fact that we would hypothesize that this particular dollar earned here this way is used and expended in this particular method is truly a hypothetical exercise. It's somewhat like me looking at my paycheck and say, "Okay, for the, for the third hour I worked on Tuesday, what, where did that money go?" And I'd say, you know, I could say, "Well, I paid my rent with that, I could have paid anything with that." So unless it's a direct fee, we're able to connect those lines in any direction. It's a, it's a hypothetical exercise than it is to say, "It's causal, this revenue drives those expenses."
Councilman Mosby.
Well, and I don't see it hypothetical, this is more like overtime money, and you might work overtime, and you're directing the funds a different way. So I don't see this as third hour revenue. This is something, it's a little bit more unique, it's variable, you know, as we hear every year, so it is a little bit more unique than third hour revenue. And seeing where it is out, and I, as well, the streetlights can't be paid by that, I mean, this is one of the revenue pools that we can use to do this, and there's quite possibly some other avenues that this money can be specially used for, and other money can't be used for. So it is a little bit unique in its own character.
Again, as I stated from the beginning, you can name it for any number of things or not, it's It's up to you. We certainly can do that. Yeah, I wasn't arguing that point, but pointing out that it's a, it's a voluntary exercise.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilkie? Councilmember Mosby?
And I don't know if you guys would let me at this time to make a council request if I needed to bring it back at the end of the meeting, or not, but to further discussion of the LS1 rates and the resolution 5888, parentheses 14, and what was presented and what was finalized. And I don't know if you wanted me to, if I could do it now, or if you wanted me?
Just so, it's on the agenda for the end, so let's wait till the end, because it's not in agenda for this point, so. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilkie.
Thank you.
Okay. Oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for three minutes on any item. If the item you wish to speak to us is on the agenda, you may want to wait for that time. Step forward and state your name.
Donald Edward, systems engineer. I had got the EIR report, started browsing through it, and noticed a big problem. One, based on a meeting that I had with Mr. Lynn at his office in April, we had a detailed discussion about where the vehicle test data, the DBAs, and RPMs, the types of engines, horsepower, et cetera, so that we could come up with a realistic estimate of the actual noise impact. Well, when I got to reading the EIR, I discovered right off that there is no data to that, that all it is is simulated computer data that has a major flaw. One, apparently they totally disregard it. Open engine, exhaust, headers open, the noise levels in there, if you look at the tables, they show they're about 1/10 to a dB above the ambient street noise. Now, anybody that wants to believe that can be my guest. I feel that the data in those tables are off by a minimum of 20 dB. So the bottom line is that whole report relative to noise has no credence. It can't be substantiated in any legal advice situation. So I wanted to point that out to you. One of the things that I was really surprised to find out that the noise is one of the major things concerning like 7,000 to 10,000 people in this city. And when they find out that there's nothing in there to substantiate this, I think you're going to have a major problem. So I wanted to bring this up.
Okay, thank you, sir. And just for your, I think you realize that we're in open comment period, so those comments should be directed to Lucille Breeze here at the city.
Well, I intend to bring them to her, but I wanted to bring them up to you, because you're the people that are running the.
Sure. Okay, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Next, please.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. My name is Lynn Widdamore. I was before you folks on August 19th, 2014 regarding my hot tub and setbacks and encroachments and et cetera. At the end of that meeting, I was led to believe, along with several council members, that it was kind of a settled issue. Well, today I got a certified letter from the city that said I can be fined up to $2,800 a week, and my wife could also get that if I don't tear out this damn building on my hot tub deck. They finally said, well, you know, we can deal with the hot tub heater since the property line has moved five foot from when you first put it in and things like that. But this is my first chance to address it with you folks, and I'm going to do my best to address it with the city. I don't know why this can't be let go. It is just a policy of the city to do something, and those change all the time. You had one where too many traders were on the street. You had some guy that had his junk traders, you're trying to get rid of them. So he tried to pass a thing that no traders could be on the street. The citizens rose up and said, hey, what about us? We're not the bad guys. And so you said, all right, we're not going to penalize everybody. I realize the code enforcement folks are, have ramped up to take care of stuff, and I hope they're cleaning all the junk in the alleys, all the junk off the front of the streets, all the trash is out there. That's where code enforcement needs to be, not inflicted on homeowners that have done their best to make the place nice and cap it up in their backyard. I discovered last time that the city controls 3,000 square foot of my lot. My house is only 1,800 square foot. So I think that's a little overreach on the city. Their setback of 18 foot on the south side of Lompoc, I don't understand that. I was told it is, they need it for whatever. I have a two-tier retaining wall in the north side of my property, and you're not going to turn anything around on top of that two-tier retaining wall that sticks over six foot high. So I need some cooperation, I think more than what I've got. And I'm going to hopefully have a chance to meet with some people of the city to address it.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
And I would advise you, just meet with the city staff, try to work with them, and um.
I have been.
Okay.
Yes.
And, yes, Councilmember Starbuck?
Mr. Widdamore, just a quick question. If I recall, years ago, wasn't your property miss surveyed?
Yes, it was. The housing tract I live in, everyone in the east side of 500 block of South T Street, each house is off its pad by one foot. So that by the time it got to me, my neighbor's house eaves are 18 inches from my house. And so that was another issue. I thought, well, you know, the city passed that one, said, well, that was okay. That was for six houses and a tract that weren't placed right. We can't come to some agreement on this building on my hot tub deck? That's really what it is. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, council members, mayor, John Lynn, chairman of Lompoc Valley Parks Recreation and Pool Foundation. I'm not sure that all of you have had an opportunity to look at the 400-page EIR for the motorsports park. I'm still working my way through it. However, I thought it would be interesting this evening to bring to you, and the prior speaker discussed it, the noise study that was done. Contrary to what he may have said to you, the, the study focused on the loudest vehicle, not the quietest vehicle. So the quietest vehicle that we tested was a street vehicle and was no louder than normal traffic, so there would have been no impact. So if you look at the noise level increase, which is the second column from the right, you'll find that in all of the locations except over on V and Central, which was impacted by the position we used for testing, that the increase is a fraction of a decibel. The human ear wouldn't be able to detect that difference. And so what we have here is the cumulative, which is the traffic noise that you have around town, and you'll notice that generally it's in the 60 to 65 dB range. And our, our city ordinance is 65 dBs is our objective. So we're happy that the design work that we did on the project and a great deal of time was spent on the noise component to minimize the noise to the surrounding neighborhood was successful. And that's really all I have to say. It was good news. I hope all of you are going to read all 400 pages of that, because as you know, we paid $200,000 for it, and we want to get our money's worth. Thank you for your time.
Hey, John, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
My understanding, what I read, maybe I read it wrong, is that the test was on four automobiles making noise, and we're going to have eight to 10. So four really doesn't make any difference. You've got to talk about the total number is going to be making, and so I think better is call it right and quit playing games with it.
Okay, so one thing about noise is, if you have two vehicles emitting 65 decibels, it's not additive. And then there's a, there's a pretty technical discussion in the back of the EIR about that. So if you have two vehicles emitting 65 decibels, and you step over here and measure it, it doesn't measure 130 decibels, it only measures 65 decibels. So what we used there in the testing was we used some street legal vehicles, we used some souped-up vehicles, if you will, and then the last stage, we used two vehicles that were open exhaust, so they would be the loudest vehicle that would be run out there. So there was an effort to, on, they asked us to provide those different types of vehicles. But, you know, if you want to talk more about DBs later, after, after 25 years in the car stereo business, that's one thing I can speak intelligently about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication and bring it back to the council on appointments. So we are going to designate voting delegates for, and alternate delegates to the League of California Cities Annual Conference. The annual conference this year is taking place in October, and I checked before the meeting, and only one council member has signed up to go, that's Councilmember Humdol. Does any other council member?
I nominate Councilmember Humdol.
Does any other council member think they will be going in October?
Is this in Sacramento, Bob?
Yes.
Long Beach, yeah. So, okay, I am at an NCPA meeting that day, so I will not be going either, so, okay. Councilmember Starbuck has nominated Councilmember Humdol as the voting delegate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote on that. Okay, that's 5-0. Okay, Councilmember Humdol is the delegate. We need to, we can have up to two alternates, and from what I understand, city manager and assistant city manager are attending. So I'd like to nominate the city manager and assistant city manager as our alternate delegates to the convention.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have a, you've got a second? Okay. Any discussion? Let's vote on that. And that passes 5-0. Okay. So we have our delegates to the annual League of California Cities meeting. Okay. We're going to go to item number four, adoption of resolution 6062, parentheses 16, authorizing supplemental appropriations for infrastructure hardware and software. This is, oh, this is not Mr. Collins.
He's here. He'll be able to answer some technical questions. I'm going to go over the, what, why the needs are there. Back, probably in October, November, the information technology division had a meeting with the police and fire divisions to let them know that some of the changes that they've been, the things they've been adding to their system, which is isolated from the city system for purposes of security, mainly by Department of Justice, their system is outgrowing the basic infrastructure of their computer core to the extent that if one of the two servers that we have that serves all their needs goes down, they wouldn't be able to bring it up, back up with one system. When they had that meeting, some options were discussed to bring the capacity of both the core system, as well as the storage, up to the needs of some of the new programs that have been put into place, such as the video systems for the police cars and some of the new storage needs for the mobile data collectors for either police or fire. Effectively, they've outgrown the, the basic system that they have. And to be able to be redundant and continue to provide the level of service that they would need in the case of some failure of any particular hardware, this request is coming forward to beef up their system. So in the event of a hardware failure, they'll able to be, remain up and running, providing dispatch services and all the other things that are related to the services that are supported by infrastructure, computer infrastructure in the, in the building that's in the police department, but also serving both police and fire. So there's a lot of terms in here for terabytes of storage and RAM of memory that is needed, but effectively, they've outgrown their system needs at a faster rate than we expected during the budget cycle. So this is going to allow them to be redundant for some time to come. And to the extent possible, Jeff has only included in this the bare-bone minimums to get us through the fiscal cycle. There's still about $30,000 of storage requests that would facilitate the video storage that is anticipated for both the in-car video and some of the video that we're getting off of cameras. So without going into much more technical detail of why they got to where they are, that's the general reasoning behind this, is right now they have two virtual servers that are serving their needs. And I say virtual because they are, actually have multiple servers that are supporting their CAD RMS system and many of their other systems that are now just part of what they use to operate. So if one of those two went down, right now, the single unit can't support that whole entire infrastructure systems that it got. So adding another server would allow that redundancy and keep them up and running. And if one of the servers goes down, the two others will be able to take over, and we'd be able to maintain the out-of-service unit through some of the maintenance agreements that we have, that we're proposing with us to same-day service, next-day service, I guess, 24/7, all year long, so.
Questions? Councilmember Starbuck?
So far, now, this is the third comeback on this from the budget. We obviously blew this at the budget at the beginning. And it says here in the report, and we just did this a few minutes ago, $160,000 augmentation out of the general fund. Is it, would this go away if we just did away with the dash cams until the next budget cycle?
No. That's a technical question, so.
So then we, we've did something here where, you know, we're talking about a lot of money again. You know, you said, we're six months away from coming into the new budget cycle. Is this just, and you said this is a minimum?
Well, we're six months away from starting that process. We're.
Okay, we're starting the process, Brad, but now, you said, we're going to, this is the minimum for us to go by. Well, so now we're putting a Band-Aid on it.
Well, it's not really a Band-Aid, because the only thing that's not being purchased is some additional long-term storage that would be there to do some of the video retrieval. We won't grow into that need until probably the 1719 cycle anyway. We don't need to buy it right now, so we're going to be able to plan for that. So the 160 that we were talking about at the last meeting, when we were talking about police and fire infrastructure, this is that 160, except it's less than 160 because of that we're pushing out just some incremental storage units that, it's just plugging some more.
So this is not on top of the 160,000?
This is the 160 we're talking about.
All right.
The last time, yeah. So, yeah, it's not on top of that. It's actually, and the reason it's lower is the memory modules are basically, you plug some more in. So we're going to get 160?
Yeah, we're only half full.
Yeah, so it's going to be half full, so we can add the other modules in at a later date. So it's not a Band-Aid, it's, it's the complete fix. And then as we get more storage requirements, we can fill that up. So it provides the basic core for quite a while, so.
And, you know, this, right again, though, this is right out of the general fund reserve, huh?
One of the questions that came up was, is there any kind of grant funding available for something like this? And for lack of a better term, computer backup, back office equipment is not something that is funded by most grant applications for public safety. They're going to fund MDCs in the car, they're going to fund possibly some of the body-worn cameras, but they're not going to fund basic needs of the whole entire system.
Would they take armored personnel? Would they take an armored personnel carrier and trade?
No, but we actually talked about that, and the police chief doesn't think that this money, the money that was used for that would be eligible for this. He's worried that it, they would turn it down, so. And so we don't really want to go that, that route because of that. I was just going to mention that if there was a lot of grant money out there, we would have applied for grant money for the city's finance system 25 years ago, but we're still 30 years into our finance system. system 25 years ago. But, we're still 30 years into our finance system, and we have to do that ourselves because there's no grant monies out there for things like this.
Mr. Collins, did you want to add anything to any portion of that so far?
Yes, sir. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to mention is, one of the things coming into this and looking at this project and, and getting the quotes ready and looking at the technology that we currently have and what we want to replace it with, um, it's my job to look to the future and make sure that we are putting in technology that, A, is going to get us the furthest into the future that we can without having to come back and ask for more money or to budget a future item. So, what this project is doing is basically supplementing our current systems with a, a new server, so that we have three servers, and then also employing technology in the backend for storage that will basically allow us to only fill up the storage right now halfway and then wait at some point in the future when hopefully prices are cheaper for storage. And that's one of the things I'm looking at, is to make sure that, that right now, we're going to fill it half-full, which will get us to the point of being able to, A, right now, service our needs. Um, my main goal is to make sure that we have a redundant system, that if anything fails, because it is public safety, that it will fail over and that we will continue to be able to provide those services for fire and police. The second thing is, is in the future, build it to the future to where if prices do come down for hard drives or for storage, then we can populate the rest of the thing to get us up to 400 terabytes of storage, which will fulfill the three years of, uh, stated needs that the police department has for body cams and keeping that storage online for three years. And so, that's, that's the main goal. Right now, get us to the point where we are redundant and that we can support our current needs, and then in the future, build it out so that we can then also support the other projects that, that we have. Um, the, one of the, the other main points is, currently, we, uh, we have a few servers, the two servers that are, they are out of warranty this year. Um, I am extending those two warranties out of my budget in order to get us by. So, I am taking those costs out of my budget right now in order to be able to, to do that, to continue those two server, servers, which we're going to ask for in the future budget in order to, to replace those. So, again, it's just one of those things that the city tends to use things past the point. I've extended warranties on servers for many, many years here in order to, to get us by to where we can keep machines for longer than we need. The products that we use are really reliable. It's cheaper for us to extend the warranties on them and be able to use them for an extended period of time. I can usually get either five or six years out of our servers, which is well past the three standard. So, again, I, I am trying to set us up for, for future growth and also to be able to, to maintain the support for the, the services that we have.
Let me ask you a quick question, Jeff, just from my own knowledge here. On a percentage basis, then, we're coming into the budgets here soon. What percentage fire use of this, you know?
Currently, the fire, there are 17 virtual servers that we're currently supporting with the two physical servers that we have. Right now, fire is taking up, um, two of those servers, but they're also using the rest of the, the, basically, the, the networking and active directory, which is their user counts, and also file storage, which are co-mingled on two secure drives and the rest of stuff. So, they're, they're using, I, I don't have a percentage, but I'd say a good 10 to 20% right now, just because of, of moving them onto this system, which they current, weren't on there before.
Does fire have to be on this system?
Well, the reason for moving fire under the system is to basically co-mingle them in the environment that we have in order to make some services that fire was requesting, such as the silent dispatch and the, the access to the CAD and stuff. It's difficult for us to do that across the firewall. Again, as Brad stated, we need to keep these two things completely separate from our city network.
Sure.
And the, the, basically, what we've named the public safety network. Before, I had fire over on our servers, and i- it's a nightmare for us to create firewall rules and create all that stuff to make that traffic flow one way, but not the other way. So, it was decided that it was going to be better for us and for the applications that we were looking at to have both co-mingled on that, in that environment. The other thing is, is they're also coming under the same Department of Justice, basically directives. So, it just makes sense for us to isolate both departments and make a public safety environment that we can house them both, both on. It's just made sense at the time, and, and moving forward with that.
Isn't there a company?
If I can.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, just to kind of touch on that, the, the biggest part of that, to put them together, was dispatch. There's, there are many things related to dispatch, which is behind the fu, behind and on their system, that fire just couldn't access when they were segregated from that system. So, primarily, all the things Jeff said are absolutely true, but the, the dispatch component is the primary driver for having them on the PD system and isolated away from the rest of the city. So, sorry.
Aren't there companies you can rent, lease space, storage space from?
A lot of what we're asking for here is, um, the actual CPU and the related software to be able to have all three of those units talk to each other. Um, as Jeff mentioned, having a storage onsite. Um, there are, um, cloud-based solutions. Uh, we don't, we don't want to go there right now because it's untested, really, or not very well-tested for the public safety sector. So, just for, for the purposes of the, um, video that's in the cars, having that stuff out in the cloud and then getting a disruption where we don't have access to that and somebody's asking for that information, we wouldn't have it. So, having it here onsite gives us a lot, much better security of that system and availability of, of that information to the officers that need it. So.
Okay. Maybe at some point, as we're looking for additional space, we may be able to look at using some of that cloud space for older material instead of, you know, and putting the newer material on.
And as a cloud solution, cloud is everywhere. As that gets more mature and becomes tested for public safety, and that might be a solution in going forward. And that is also something that we are, have a choice with on our finance system, cloud-based or local-based, and the same issues are attributable to it. If somebody wants to see their utility bill and we don't have access to it, then the customer may not have access. That, that's not something that would happen all the time, but, um, I'm much more comfortable having the data behind our firewall and not rely on somebody else where that might get hacked. So, we, we might get hacked too, but we have a lot of firewall security, and we actively maintain that, um, that security and that firewall here. So.
Councilmember Molesby.
Who's doing the installation?
Uh, we have a consulting firm that we use called Nova Coast. That's based out of Santa Barbara.
And I, I assume all this, did it go out to a, a bid process for the acquisitions of the equipment, or did it not need to, or?
To reduce the amount of complexity of the system, we've settled on a, um, server environment that is Dell-based. So, we're using that because if we go out to bid on every single unit, the ability for us to pinpoint trouble spots is much easier when you have a consistent system across all the systems we have. So, we, we've settled on Dell servers, Dell virtual servers as our, um, choice for the basic, uh, network infrastructure, both in PD and in the city.
So, you're telling me, we're, we're stuck with the person we're stuck with on purchasing? There's not a competitive bid process for that?
Well, it's competitive in the fact that the Dell systems are a government contract that we are able to piggyback on. So, that, that in itself is a, um, we're utilizing that. So.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Okay, one of my last questions here is, so I guess we are getting rid of our increased need for the dash cameras here, then. The money that was approved before, we're not going to use for the dash cameras, as was asked.
Well, I think if the dash cameras was the last request, there was a little bit of confusion whether there was money in that bid for storage or not, and we confirmed after that meeting that it was just for the actual hardware of the dash cams. Th- this is going to be the storage onsite for that information, once, once it's downloaded from the dash cam computers in the cars to our, to our system. So, this is the storage solution for the dash cam cameras.
Okay, so, we're actually saving 22,000 with this, then, over what we approved last meeting? Uh, rough numbers.
Well, all we said at, at the last meeting was that we would need the $160,000 to be able to retain three years' worth of, um, material.
I just wanted to be real clear on that because it's, you know, related to the purchase of dash cameras is what was used.
Yeah, that purchase was authorized for the dash cameras. That purchase was not.
This, right here is the support of the dash cameras.
Right, yes.
Anyone else? Thank you. Go to public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring back the council. What's your pleasure? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation, yes.
And I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Come on.
Councilmember Vega. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, which is introduction of ordinance number 1624, parentheses 16, concerning management of shopping carts. City manager Patrick Wymanler.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, honorable council members and public. We're here to talk about the, uh, an introduction of ordinance number 1624, 16, concerning the management of sho- shopping carts. Uh, you've got a more robust, uh, council item, agenda item before you, rather than my reading through all that. I'll just hit the highlights. Generally, we've got a problem in the city with, uh, seeing a number of abandoned shopping carts and other similar, uh, carts that are around in various neighborhoods and end up, uh, sitting there sometimes for weeks at a time. Uh, it's not a desirable situation. So, we've looked for, at, uh, ways we might address that and, and come up with a new proposed ordinance. In conducting a review, staff, uh, reviewed over 30 different, the ordinances we're dealing with golf, with, uh, shopping carts from over 30 different cities. Uh, we also held meetings with our code enforcement team, discussed through those options. We had a presentation from the California Cart Retrieval Corporation, which currently contracts with 12 of Lompoc's largest, uh, retailers for cart retrieval, and, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion that was carried out, uh, in looking at different options. What we finally arrived at and recognized what was that, there are different approaches you can take, and you can put the, the onus on the person who has possession of the cart. You can put, uh, you can take a, and eradicate any abandoned cart approach just by, uh, taking them away. Uh, we, uh, preferred what many, uh, cities have come to realize that the most effective approach is to put the onus on the owner of the cart. And, but we wanted to do that in a way that maybe, um, makes that burden as, as what we think might be as light as possible. And so, what we are recommending is that, again, that we, uh, have a, an ordinance in place that's going to limit the presence of carts where they're not supposed to be out in the streets and in the neighborhoods, and, uh, to have, uh, companies have the choice of either submitting, uh, mandatory shopping cart prevention plans or arriving at some alternatives. Uh, what, what the ordinance requires amongst other things, just to highlight, is a shopping cart identification sign, so that we can be sure that it's labeled and we know who the owner is. And, uh, as we said, in, in individual business that has shopping carts, they're, they're able to, if they wish, to submit a, an abandoned shopping cart prevention plan. In other words, if they'd like to tackle this on their own, they certainly can. They just need to let us know how they plan to intentionally go about making sure that their carts don't stay out in the, uh, streets. Uh, that would require, uh, what's, they use the term director approval, and by the director, they mean the city manager or his or her designee. Um, there's an evaluation report that follows up on that plan to make sure that their plan is being effective. Uh, they can, uh, companies can also ask for an exemption from having that, um, mandatory plan, particularly if their, either their plan has been, uh, successful, or they've just found other ways that are, that are successful, so that they are not an offending owner of carts out there. Um, with the, the ordinance, uh, calls for some pretty steep violations. One of the things that we found when we do have cart owner indifference, it's because they might consider the cost to spend to go about retrieving their carts is not enough to move them toward being active in that area. So, we include some, um, civil penalties, including up to $1,000 per violation, in hopes that we don't actually have to assess those sorts of penalties, but rather that we have their attention and that the alternative to have a cart recovery program in place is favorable to having to pay those sorts of violations. Abandonment of carts is prohibited, and removal of carts from where they're supposed to be is unlawful. And altogether, uh, we can promote a system where they can, uh, a cart owner, a, a store that uses carts, they can either have their own, uh, process in place. They can hire with the same company that, um, some of the larger retailers in the city are using, or they can pursue other routes, uh, other solutions. There is technology available if they want to invest in that, that helps to make sure their carts stay onsite, and if they want to take those sorts of approaches, they'd have that available to them as well. Now, that sort of summarizes the highlights, but this was brought with an idea of being able to provide a potential solution to the, uh, the abandoned cart, uh, issues that we're having out in the community, and we submit that for your consideration.
Okay, Councilmember Vega.
I have a question for Patrick. Um, is it acceptable for us to seek shopping carts with the people pushing them throughout the city? I mean, is this something the store is going to be, is that a question they'll be asked? Uh, are, are you okay with taking your carts, these people taking your carts home, or is that going to be one of our provisions when they come in with a program, uh, referencing that if they, if they choose to take it up on their own?
Yeah. Included in, in the, um, ordinance is the fact that a removal of a shopping cart from its base location is unlawful unless that person has that specific permission from the owner, because again, it's ultimately going to be the owner's responsibility for making sure that cart gets back. Uh, I assume that if they have some, a customer they believe is going to be reliable, take the cart home, drop off their groceries, bring it immediately back, not leave it around, that we, the, the system would provide for that opportunity. But for someone to take them without that express permission, that would be unlawful, and we give, therefore, the opportunity for the owner to be able to, to retake their possession of their property.
I could see a program, Patrick, where people that were handicapped or just without a car, maybe making arrangements with the individual business, you know, some sort of a permit or something that says, hey, you know, but you got to bring it back, you know? And then the other thing, I think we probably should note, that we have other businesses that, uh, such as recycling and stuff, uh, that probably it would be good to communicate with these businesses to say, hey, uh, it's not acceptable because it could add to someone leaving their carts here. I, maybe most of the businesses are conscious of it, but we don't want someone to say it's okay.
Yeah, we do have a section that calls out about businesses without shopping carts, but who benefit from there being transient shopping carts, and it points out, it calls out recycling centers in particular, which is usually where, either here or, or in other cities, that we find, uh, you can find an accumulation of, of carts occurring. So, that would, that would put some onus and responsibility on those businesses that are benefiting from having carts leaving their intended location and ending up somewhere else.
Um, one other question. It was brought up to, um, I think just about everyone, that, uh, you're not looking to get into the citation part of it. I'm sure, uh, Pat Walsh doesn't want to get into, uh, treating them as stolen bicycles or something like that, you know?
We, we'd rather not, but we hope that the citation, the potential citation is steep enough that will, that will grab the attention and, and gain the co- steep enough that will, that will grab the attention and gain the cooperation of, of cart owners that are otherwise have expressed indifference to us when we've called and contacted them and pointed out that they have carts in different places, and they point out that cart's not worth enough for them to take their time.
Thank you.
Councilor Homburg.
Yeah, you're going to have a meeting with some of these businesses, so you can sit down and find out what, what it's all about. We are talking about it here, and I think you've got a real good program. I don't have against it, but we should probably at least send a note out to all of those that have businesses that have carts, and give them a chance to do that. And the other thing we didn't talk about is, there's a lot of carts going across the river, don't make it all the way, and they're being stacked up on this side of the river. That's, that's a, not only are they taking carts, but also causing a real chance for accidents, and somebody's going to get killed.
Right, and we do get into a pretty gray area once they've crossed, you know, this is an ordinance that has to do with what goes on in our city limits, and so once they've made their way outside of the city limits, then we get into a bit of a problem area, including as you're, you're pointing out, if you get out by the bridge and heading out east, there are accumulation points there that get outside of our jurisdiction. In, in one way, therefore, the best way to counteract that would be to have the sort of ordinance which some cities do, I'm not recommending that we do, but some cities do require the, the use of technology to make sure that those carts just physically cannot leave the premises of where they're, they're meant to be used. That can also be a high cost and, and quite onerous to the businesses that are the cart owners. And so we were trying to take an approach, that is a balanced approach, still trying to be business friendly in this, but bring about business accountability.
Councilor Mosby.
Did you meet with any of the owners of these carts?
I did not.
So did any of them come to the table when you were with code enforcement and discussing?
No, that was a staff meeting.
Okay, I just think it, maybe it'd be a good idea to discuss, maybe they have other ideas about this that might work. I mean, we do want to show ourselves to be business friendly, we should probably bring the business people to the table. Since it's their cart, they might have an idea that they can, they would, it'd help us, since we're trying to put the burden, seems like the burden of this on them. Which brings up the other point is, it's, it's like, the people who are having something stolen from them are being responsible for the product being stolen from them. And I believe some of the burden is on the people who are taking the carts, and we seem to be dodging that significantly in this ordinance.
Not necessarily dodging, but certainly recognizing and making a, a, a social choice, it's up to you, you're the council, if you want to direct it differently. There are communities which do, do put portion of the emphasis of their ordinance into the person who has the cart. There are cities, for instance, that limit current possession of a cart to a single cart, so you don't see somebody who's pushing and pulling a string of, a bunch of them toward a recycling center or other location. There, there are definitely some social aspect pushbacks that occur if we start targeting our enforcement on person in possession as opposed to the owner.
I mean, the person stealing the cart?
Well, I don't know if they're stealing, borrowing, or whatever, but yeah.
Well, they're taking, they're taking.
The person in possession of the cart, off premises, yeah.
Okay, and I've analyzed the recycling aspect to a large degree, and I've actually, because I have one of the guys in one of my properties, and I gave him a rule that you do not buy from anybody showing up one of these carts. Now granted, they might park a block or two away, but in analyzing what's going on, the people coming to recycle are generally the ones retrieving it out of the alley that's been abandoned by somebody who went to the store. These gentlemen aren't going to the store, gentle ladies aren't going to the store to get a cart to go recycling. They find it abandoned somewhere in an alley, so they're actually part of a retrieval program themselves. But I have made a rule, on, on my properties at least, that they aren't to buy anybody showing up with, with that. So I tried to reach out in that degree.
You're a media commended for that.
And the, and the gentleman who does the recycling, once a week, he picks up the carts in a one to two block radius of that area and delivers them free of charge back to the people.
Very nice.
So he has, he has tried to work with it a lot, but a number of these carts, like the ones that council member was, Homburg was talking about, were over in the bushes over by well number eleven, and those got accumulated and set on the side of the street. Those were on city property over there.
I would, I would point out real quick on, on the contact with the owners. While I haven't contacted any owners, we, we did contact, the cart company would, because of the knowledge that they represented a, a great percentage of the current owners. So I would say of the people that are currently engaged with the cart program, we'd be happy to talk to them as well, but this ordinance should fit right in with what they are currently already.
I was told only two of the local people go with the cart guys, not twelve.
They gave us a list of, of everybody that's their, their client.
And I've dealt with some of the, one of the cart pickup guys, and what he does, if there's garbage in the cart, they pick the garbage up and throw it on the ground and take the cart. So I had, there's another thing that comes to play with this. Why, I believe we drastically need to do something about the cart issue. I must definitely believe we need to do something. I don't think that the burden should all be placed on the owner of the cart who's having it removed from him. I do believe, the way this is drafted up, a majority of the burden is placed on him. Is, is there a way that we can treat this like abandoned property, as somebody takes a bicycle and leaves it on a sidewalk? How do we treat a bicycle that's left on the sidewalk somewhere?
I'm not sure.
Maybe the chief could answer that.
I, I don't think it's getting a priority, a call amongst other calls for, for services.
Well, if it's abandoned personal property, what do we do with abandoned person property? Somebody's.
Well, I imagine our, may, perhaps our street crew or somebody goes by to pick it up.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, one, one of the goals, I think, that, that your staff was trying to achieve was not having the city end up becoming the caretaker and having to store all this stuff. Because once the city takes hold of this personal property, whether it's a bike, or what we'd call trash, but someone else says it's their possessions, or a cart, once we take hold of it, we have to have a place to store it. We have to store it for so much time, we have to give notice, try to find out who the owner is, give notice to the owner, and we have to pay the cost for all that. And then we have to pay for the cost of disposing of it. So this, this was an attempt to not have the city be doing that, and, and other than that, I don't know of any other way for the city to get involved with getting personal property off the street without creating that.
And I guess what I was asking is, like, bicycles, we have a way of doing that, because we probably store hundreds of bicycles.
I think in my twenty years with, with the city, I, I, I don't know that I've ever heard of an abandoned bicycle. I truly haven't.
Stolen, abandoned, it's, whatever, it's left on the street somewhere.
Then it gets picked up by the next person, I guess. But I just, when you were asking, well, what do we do with that? I just don't know, I don't know that we've ever encountered one.
I've actually called the police and had them ban it on my private property and such. I've actually had.
I don't know what we do with it, I've never encountered.
Yeah, I've had them come and pick them up before, so, from my properties, when they've been abandoned there.
Okay.
Stolen from somebody, left behind, yes. Left in the middle of.
Well, in that case, when we do have stolen and unclaimed bicycles, we accumulate them, and eventually that they're unclaimed, they get accumulated and turned over to like a nonprofit that takes, picks them, puts them back together and, and delivers them to kids in need, I guess.
You know, if I can get out of the bicycle business, I would as well. It is one of the biggest clutter in any property room. So yes, we'd take abandoned stolen bikes often, but they clutter my property room.
And, and a lot of these carts are worth more than some of these bikes I've seen you end up with. I recognize that. As, there is a sign on the carts, majority of these carts, that says, you know, do not steal me, you're going to get a fine. Have we written a fine? Has Lompoc PD written a fine in a while?
Not, not since I've been here, and I don't know that it happened before I was here.
It just seems like, you know, punishment is a deterrent, there's usually why there's a fine on there. I was told that in many cases, the owners of the carts wouldn't back up PD with, with that, if you went, started ticketing people for taking carts. Is, is that an issue?
I would say that the store owners aren't willing victims, because it creates administrative work for them and possible court time for them. So that is one of the biggest issues, is getting them to, to be a victim. You need a victim before you can cite somebody.
Again, I might, I definitely want to get something resolved. I mean, I see them everywhere, all over the place, I know a lot of people are tripping over them, they're tired of them, you know, being everywhere. But I think it's, it, an equal amount of burden needs to be put, so say burden, put on the people who own the carts, as well as the people who are taking the carts. And I, and I see in, in the way this is drafted and written, it seems like majority of the burden is put on the owner of the cart. And I'd like to see.
No doubt.
I'd like to see engage in discussion with the people who own the carts, maybe they can come up with their own idea without us having to, you know, put another ordinance on the books that currently, right now, will enforce, but, and we already have a number of them out there already that we don't seem, you know, to be capable of enforcing, we have a, you know, a, a pecking order, it seems to say. Is this one of these a year or two from now that what are we going to be doing? And I'd like, if we can get them to solve their own problem, and maybe you guys could meet again and, and, and bring them to the table, and maybe they can come up to a solution. Shopping carts aren't, aren't inexpensive. Where I gather, they can be upwards of three, four, five hundred dollars a cart. So you'd think that they wouldn't want them leaving their properties. And, and that would be my recommendation, is that we, we do come back that way with more discussion with the owners of the carts. Maybe they were a little bit left out of the table in this discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Vega.
I did want to make a comment there concerning that same subject, as far as, it seems like it would be more proactive for us to get into and, and adopt an ordinance instead of getting into the business of collecting shopping carts, as I see one of the alternatives here, and then having an impound yard with carts. So it seems like it'd be more proactive. I think it's fairly simple to adopt an ordinance that says everyone's responsible for their own carts, just to keep from clutter as far as code enforcement's involved. So I think that if you invite too many people to the table, you're going to get a lot of answers, you know, a lot of different answers, you know? So I'm in favor of adopting an ordinance that would control that and maybe asking the store owners to put some restrictions. And again, you also have the leeway that allows them to be proactive in their own, on their own behalf by showing that they have a policy in place, so.
Councilor Starbuck.
Before we go to, before we go to public comment on this, I'd probably just say that, yes, I agree there's a problem. Are we going to solve it tonight? No. One of the things that this council does have the ability to do here is introduce by a first reading this ordinance, and we don't waive the further reading, we set it for a future public hearing. This way, maybe we can get some input from people, and, you know, this will become an issue. We don't have to waive further reading.
If I may. The waiver of the further, we, we have to have a second reading for this to become effective. The waiving the further reading just means that you don't have to read every page of this ordinance out loud. That's all the waiver meant. This will come for a second reading.
Okay, and again, before we go to public comment, I, I feel a little bad that it's all, all the ordinance is put on the, the retailer as well. However, what I'd like to see, you know, too many times, to use a term of my colleague over here, too many times we kick the can down the road. So what I'm hoping is that this is a good start. It probably, it may not be the, the final solution that we come with. So when we discuss either voting on this, I'm going to try to get the council to recommend that we come back in six months, then we'll have feedback from both the, the cart owners and the public, and maybe from Mr. Wymanler and the PD, is the system working? And maybe we have to alter a little bit. So I think it's a good start, but maybe I'd like, I'm going to like to see it come back in about six months, just for a review, how is it working? So, okay, with that, if nothing else, I'm going to go to the public for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item?
John Lynn Lompoke, resident and business owner, never had any shopping carts, don't have a dog in the fight. I did go back and look at a file I had on shopping carts from when I was mayor, and I talked with the, the cart retrieval folks on May of 2012, and at that point in time, they had six stores enrolled in Lompoke. And their comment to me was, well, you know, we only have six of the stores enrolled, so it makes it difficult. Today, according to the staff report, they have twelve, and frankly, sitting and thinking, I was only able to name eleven stores that have carts that don't have a pole on them that keep them from going out the door. So it would appear that today they have corrected that problem. I think it would be very nice, as a council, if you would continue an item and talk to the store owners about how they would like to handle this. Personally, I'm concerned that the ordinance doesn't really offer any solution other than throwing it on the store owners, as opposed to the proposal from CSCRC, who will pick up the carts. Not sure we necessarily want to be in the impound business of shopping carts, however, we do have adequate space at the solid waste yard, and we would be able to charge a fee for the retrieval of that cart to whomever it belonged. There's a, there's a tendency, I think, in what we do in government, to take the path that is easiest for the government to go forward, but doesn't tend to be the most successful. And asking a large number of stores to develop a plan, which they have to renew annually, and if they get a waiver, they have to come in annually and get the waiver redone, and all of the other components of this ordinance is extremely cumbersome. On the other hand, the proposal from CSCRC is very straightforward. They will take care of the problem, and if there is, if they're not taking care of the problem, we have one person to go to. One of the things that we did back in 2012 is we publicized the internet site called cartretrieval.net. If I remember correctly, it was in a utility building, and then we also distributed it and talked about it at council. There is a good suggestion within the ordinance, which is that the name and address of the owner of the cart be placed on it, but perhaps more importantly, that that website be placed upon it. So when somebody sees it sitting there, they don't have to wonder who, who they should contact. Number one, and I think that could be added, a link could be added to the police department's app, so you could simply go to the PD app, hit shopping cart, and it would link you to these guys. And one of the big issues in retrieving carts is finding them, and by perhaps a better use of the app, we would be able to help the public report them and the vendor pick them up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I probably pick up, as a private citizen.
Just state your name, please.
Robert Dunlap. I probably pick up the majority of the carts that private people do. I have an autistic friend, young man, who helps me do it. And two main violators, at least as I see it, who have businesses on opposite corners of the community, in my eyes, are not very responsible. I contact them a lot, and not much happens. That doesn't deter me from trying to teach my friend civic duty and try and, try and do, try and help out. It might put me out of business, but that's fine. It is a problem. But from my experience, the, the two biggest offenders do not listen, and I, I have tried hard. I don't just walk up to someone that's retrieving carts, I've, I go to the management, and they're indifferent. Done it many a time. And so I just wanted to give you that input. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring back the council. Councilor Starbuck.
Yeah, you know, before we go diving off on this, I have an, an email that was to you, Mayor, dated April 22nd, 2015, from our code enforcement guy, and it lists the business and professions codes with the sections here. We may want to look at this before we go into this, because we're, we're talking about apples and oranges here based upon this. So, you know, maybe a little stay on this before we move, because it's, this is putting it on the people that take the carts. Here, we're, we're, it's calling it theft, and, you know, on down the line, who's accountable, and, and there's legislature listed. I mean, it was far more than what I thought we were going to get into here.
Councilor Mosby.
Yeah, I, I would like to say, see us take thirty days or so on this, and, and, and get a contact with the owners of the carts, and give them this, and say, hey, this is what's coming down the pipe. Do you have a suggestion? I think we owe it, we, we do go and profess ourselves to be business friendly. I think it would be important, granted, they have the opportunity to see this, it's noticed, et cetera, but something that directly affects people and an ownership on this, I think we should do a little harder outreach. And, you know, before we, we get on this, I mean, you give it thirty days, and I'll jump on board. And, you know, before we get on this, I mean, you give it 30 days and I'll jump on board after 30 days. We can't come up with something with a better solution. If we can bring the other players to the table, if they're okay with us, let's run with it. But that would be a suggestion I'm putting out there.
Councilmember Vega.
I have a question for Mr. Panoni there. Joe, if we're having a first reading, obviously, we're going to have a second reading. Is that correct? Okay, and now how does that go? And who does, is there an outreach on that or is there a letter posted? Or what is that? Or is it just another second chance before we make a decision on this? Once we go with this on the first, waiving the first reading, what happens on the second reading?
What typically happens is at your next meeting, this ordinance, the ordinance would be brought back to you to decide whether or not you want to adopt it. Typically, there isn't a letter that goes out to people who may be affected by it. The public meeting is noticed and that information is on the website that that ordinance is coming. So there isn't any special letter that goes out. We certainly could do that. I'm not sure if the staff knows which businesses all have carts to send it to. And there'll always be that one that you didn't send a letter to, so.
So I guess my question here is, if we were to go with staff recommendations tonight and we have a second reading to this, the next meeting or whatever we have, in the meantime, is it possible to send out a letter to these businesses that are grocery stores or someone potentially, or put a posting? Okay, well, it's my, it's my prerogative to ask, right? Is that true?
Sure.
Okay.
So as the city attorney pointed out, we'd be happy to do that. I can't sit here and think about what the comprehensive list is, where all the data is, where there's a succinct file that says, these are the businesses in Lompoke that have, in Lompoke that have carts. We have a list of businesses that we can come up with and think we have them. But as you point out, we might miss one or two or whoever. So I don't know if you want to call out exactly who you'd like us to meet with or you just want to leave to us to try to hit as many people as we might come up with. I'm good either way. If you've got, I don't know whether you're, I mean, yeah, there's, there's, there's no comprehensive list right now, so.
Patrick, I think that probably just the effort would be better than no effort for us to move forward. I mean, if there's some way of noticing or, anyway.
Mr. Mayor, would you want to have the second reading rather than be at the next meeting? Be two meetings from now? Does that provide some?
Well, if we decide to go that way, yes, we'd have it in a month instead of the next meeting. Okay, if we decide to go that way.
And I assume if we went that way, we're just going to put out, we're going to figure out who this list is. We're going to send them a letter. We're not checking everybody's calendars. We're telling them when we're planning on meeting. Because you're saying meet with everyone and I don't know if that means one-on-one or we're going to call a meeting at a time and a date. And if they can make it, they can. If they don't show up, they don't show up, but I.
Councilmember Vega, did you mean to notify them that there will be a reading on such and such a date? And that's when they can come to voice their opinion?
Actually, that's what I meant.
Okay.
It wasn't a personal meeting. It was, it was meant to be in.
Okay, because I thought, what I heard from Councilmember Mosby was a desire to have us meet with the owners because they might have some additional ideas.
I think before you drafted, you probably should have brought them to the table. But you have a point here. My recommendation was, or suggestion was, that what you have here, before we go and pass and say, hey, this is going to happen, potentially. Do you guys have some input? Sending in this to the manager of each one of the stores that's out there, it shouldn't be too difficult to round up which ones. I mean, we are, this guy's got a list of supposedly 12 of them already. So we probably have a good, good step in that direction. That was mine. I would have liked to have seen if you're doing something like this, did you bring all the players to the table? And maybe they have a really good idea that can help bring input. It's going to, it's going to burden them significantly.
Yeah, and I understand the goodwill nature of your statement, bring all the players to the table. I'm a little gun shy about the literal interpretation of that and making sure I get all the players at the table.
I think, Councilmember Vega, clarify your point. I think Councilmember Vega had the good point.
I'd like to clarify here. Actually, I'd like to make a motion, if I could, that we accept staff's recommendation with the addition that we also, that we do notice the players, not personally, but at least send out a letter or do some sort of a publication, letting them know that we will be having a second reading on this. And maybe the timeframe, as Joe stated, is there a way of putting this out 30 days? Do we need that? Is that necessary? Would that be prudent? Okay?
I would suggest if you're not going to, don't want it brought back at your next council meeting, say, two meetings from now.
And I think that that kind of solves a couple of the people's concerns here, you know, and as far as notifying the businesses that we will be having the second reading. Then they can show up and have their concern when we have our meeting, that this thing is posted. So anyway, that's my motion.
So is your motion, staff recommendations to be brought back two meetings from now with the second reading?
Yes, yes, sir. With that addition of noticing the businesses.
I understood the motion to be to introduce the ordinance tonight.
Correct, yes.
And bring it back for a second meeting, two meetings from now. And to send notice best we can to who we think best.
Yes, Joe, you've got it. Yes, thank you.
Okay, I don't, do I, let's get a second first on this and then we'll go about comment. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so let's second it. Okay, now we go to discussion.
In discussion, I have one, one thing is that instead of having them all come here to the council meeting in a month, a year, a month from now, I'd rather have, see if we could have a meeting, you could meet with them prior to that meeting and see if they sent a letter, a letter out there, all of them. So have them here. Because trying to come to a council meeting and try and have all the players in there, it's not going to work. But if we can meet with them prior to it and then get, at least get their feeling as how it'll work. That's.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'm going to probably vote against this, not based upon the public input or anything here. But I really think we're going off track, we're going off base. This is the California law. We have all received copies of this. It is different than what we're proposing. It contradicts, we should more align ourselves. So I'll be voting no on this.
Councilmember Mosby.
Well, I would have liked a little more time. Now, the item that Councilmember Starbuck's bringing up, I would have liked, had an opportunity to review that. If you could amend on what you have, Councilmember Vega, that the list provided to council of the people that they mail out, their correspondence to.
So basically, you'd like them to give us a copy of the list on who's, who it's sent out to?
Right.
Is that correct? Is that something that can be done there also? Patrick, Joe?
Certainly.
Yeah, once you guys have your mail-out list or whatever, can that be sent back to council? So we can know exactly who's out there? And then it gives, if somebody has, sees that there's a hole in the bucket, I guess they can notify somebody on their own or something, I guess. I don't know. Would that suffice?
With a caveat that the council understands, it's a slippery slope if you start meeting with all those people because of more than, two of you meet with all those people.
I got you, I got you. So Councilmember Mosby.
The list, the master list comes back at the next meeting of who they sent out to. I'm not saying there we go and they're just showing that a dozen or 12 or 14, whatever it is that you guys have found that have carts.
I got you. Without the intent that we're going to go out there and meet with these people, I got you. Just, just for.
So you want this at the next meeting, not in memo form? You want it reported at the next meeting?
I was saying, when you come back at the final, two weeks from now, the final meeting, that who you responded to, who you've contacted, who you made contact with? If that's something you would make amendment to?
Yeah, I can amend my motion for that, okay? If that's easy enough, Joe, are we okay with that? Okay, so we're all on the same plane?
I'll just need Councilmember Humdol to.
You okay with that?
And if I may, Councilmember Mosby, you said in two weeks, you mean two meetings from now? Okay. And Councilmember Starbuck, the staff report actually does discuss that law that you have in front of you. And one of the options that the staff reviewed was to implement that. That's what, that puts it on the city to have to figure out a way to impound them and hold them and all that stuff.
It is listed in this, what we're allowed to do.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Let's go ahead and vote. That passes 4-1. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, any written communications?
Nothing.
Okay. Oral communications, this is the public's opportunity to speak to us on any item. Two minutes. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication. Bring it back to the council for council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Councilmember Mosby, you had a request.
Yeah, I'd like to bring back the, for discussion and quite possibly a movement towards a decision of the Resolution 5888, Prince's 14, where the tripling of the LED light rates went from roughly 17 cents a kilowatt to 52 cents a kilowatt. And there seems to be, maybe that's the direction we want to go. But in my analysis, there was, there was not a complete connection between how it went that way. We put in the LED lights under the pretenses that we were going to save money and then we tripled the rate and we didn't save any money. So I'd like to come back for a discussion and if that's a direction we could go to go. And I'd like to do it, you know, within the next two months. Maybe discuss this to see on the LS1, the streetlight rate, that as we found out, is being paid for by, well, we can't call them profits, but NCPA revenues above rates and how we got to where we are right now, which I find there to be a hole.
Okay, that's a motion, or it's a request. We have a second and a third. I'll go ahead and second.
I'll give him a third.
Okay, so we'll bring that back. Okay.
I've got, I've got one more that I'd like to bring back for discussion. And as the rest of the council members know, and if the public, hopefully, they know that our, I believe our street impact fees came back to play July 1st. So if you had an opportunity to look at the impact fee and granted, in the near future, hopefully, we're going to be redoing this. But in that impact fee, we do have a couple of items that I've read in there that are conflict. One is if with the street impact fee, is we have a North 8th Street capacity improvements of $22 million with the projects. And I've been to engineering staff and it says in here, "Lompoke City Engineering has developed a list of improvements needed to serve the additional traffic associated with future developments." I've asked to see what these, the $22 million with the project in North 8th Street that we're charging people for. And I haven't been able to get a description of these projects. It seems to be a list that's, that's a little short. But we are going to be charging people for these impact fees. So I think that needs to be brought back sooner than later for a discussion of how we did this on this impact fee. It was revised when the East-West River Crossing, the $26 million project was taken off the list. That was also known as the Central Avenue Extension. But I believe that there are, there needs to be a discussion right away about these $22 million with the projects that don't seem to be, don't seem to be there. But we are going to be charging people for them. So I think we need to bring it back and that's one of my requests on the impact fee. So I guess I would need a second, a third of that to bring that back for discussion so we can.
Yeah, I would absolutely second that because I realize that there's a couple of other projects on there that probably deserve some consideration and discussion with us, the V.
I'll give a third.
Street widening and some of these.
Okay, we have a second and a third. Okay.
And I've got one last one.
Of course you do.
If I can. Well, I mean, I, you know, I guess I'm just a little bored to read these impact fee study reports.
Can I just ask a clarification about the one that just passed? In terms of its timing, you want that brought back as quickly as possible as opposed to waiting for the balance of the impact fees?
Yes, I think it's, because we re-imposed them back starting July 1st. And I think if we're going to be putting out to developers, we should clarify what it is we're doing. The other one is an item that I was reading, it came up through here and it is a conflict between the general plan and what they call the level of service. And this is for park improvements. And since the early 60s, the city of Lompoke has had a 12 acres of parkland per thousand as part of the development process. We have had two acres of neighborhood park, five acres of community and five acres of regional. And in the processing of the general plan, that was reduced down to five acres per thousand is what our level of service is currently. The general plan is the master document that oversees the impact fee study. However, I do believe we still are assessing based on the 12 acre per thousand as well as, I don't really see that that's what the council was realizing was going on. And we're looking through the massive general plan document that the level of service was being reduced from 12 acres per thousand to five acres per thousand. And I would like to bring that back for discussion and to understand that if this is what we're looking at and granted, the new impact fee studies are coming forward as the capital improvement plans. And I think it'd be appropriate to discuss, again, sooner than later, are we looking at wanting to go as the general plan does with five acres or how the city of Lompoke has for approximately 50 years to use 12 acres per thousand? So I believe this should come back, again, sooner than later for a full discussion.
Questioning the staff on this, would this be part of an amendment process for the general plan in this discussion? Or would it be just an AB 1600 discussion?
It does not necessarily involve an amendment to the general plan. It sounds like the questioning has to do with what are we assessing based upon which number has occurred in the general plan? In other words, if we find out, it doesn't sound like your issue is with where the current five acres per thousand is. It's whether or not the impact fees are supporting the five acre per thousand or the 12 acre.
It's actually both. I was around when the, when the general plan was brought into play. And I don't believe it was highlighted, let's say, that we were reducing from 12 acres per thousand to five acres per thousand. I think that was a significant reduction in, you know, it's one of those items. I believe that, you know, there was a lot to be discussed on that. And I would like to have that come back. So the two, the two items, the impact fee as well as the reduction.
So it is the, the policy discussion about how many acres of parkland per thousand residents that we have in the city? Plus then, the impact fees that are set based upon wherever we set that impact?
Correct. So it's both items. I believe that there's a level of discussion needs to be.
Okay.
Now, do you need a second?
I would go ahead and second that. And I would also like to include with Councilmember Mosby's on that, maybe we should define what is actual maintained parkland and then what we have as open space that we also put into that equation.
And in the AB 1600 report, there is that, in the impact fee study report, that does have that categorized out on total park, developed acres and the likes, is in the report.
Okay, I have a second. I still need a third.
I'll third.
Okay.
I'll conclude.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Vega.
I do have a council request. I think this regards public safety. I think it regards being a proactive city as far as economic development for our businesses. So I'd like to ask that we bring back and have a review on our panhandling ordinance within the city. And I'd like us to take a look at and see what can be done and especially within our business districts. I think we're trying to promote our city and in the wine industry, trying to be a positive influence to our businesses. We're going to have new hotels here. We're going to have a number of buildings and possibly a commercial district coming in here. I think the best we can do, since we're already doing the carts, we're doing other things, I think we can look at some of these people that are permanently out there. And if there's, isn't anything we can do about it, then what are we going to do? We're going to give them a business license so they can do this? I can tell you that it's, it's an emotional thing to have to go to a store or come out of a business. And either you give or you don't give. And it does raise your blood pressure. It does keep you from going to a business sometimes. So I think that, you know, if we could, I'd like to have a request that we bring that and have that discussion with possibly a police chief, possibly planning, and possibly set this up so that we could have possible action on this once we review it and come to a consensus.
I'd like to just mention here, I went through this discussion just recently. It is very involved, it's very detailed. We did just pass a panhandling ordinance. And we did what we could legally to prevent the panhandling. There, I would maybe talk with the police chief about this because we did do it. And to do what you're saying is, it's not allowable. They won't allow us to do this.
I'd still like to have that review. That's still my request. So I'd like to ask, hopefully, I can get the votes and support, at least to talk about it and discuss. Because just because we passed one thing doesn't, doesn't mean we did everything we can. If we look around at the surround. If we look around at the surrounding cities, just like we did for everything else, I'm sure there's something we can tweak or twist so that we can raise the bar a little bit in our city and especially in our business districts in front of our commercial businesses and our franchises.
Councilmember Mosby.
Maybe, maybe we could start off with a, a discussion if we find out there's other avenues that we could go. I'd be, you know, willing to back you with, with the discussion and then we can find.
Yeah, that, that's really all I ask for because, you know, hey, we, we all need to see if there's something else we can do. We can't say there's nothing else we can do.
I think the public would benefit from this as well.
Sure.
May I suggest maybe just a presentation from staff? Because we've just did this.
No, I still have a request that I'd like to have a discussion and possible action if we can. Staff can come here and give a presentation, but that's not what I'm asking for.
Okay, so, Councilmember, fireworks. Damn, I thought it was the fifth. Okay, okay.
I, I would give him the second on that, I don't know if he can get a third on that.
Okay, I'll give him a third. Okay. Councilmember Mosby, or Council, this, Councilmember Humdol.
I had very little, I was just saying, I was at a forum on June 22nd and 23rd up in Monterey and it was called the Mayor's Council Members Executive Forum, and also along with that, there was a Leadership Academy at the same time. I give the report, each one of you has received it, I hope you read it because there's some real good information on how it was handled, so instead I just leave myself, you have it, so take attention, look at it because there's some good information I put together in there.
Okay, I attended many meetings, there was only one meeting with the city expense. It was an NCPA meeting in Palo Alto. I chose not to stay in a hotel up there. The equivalent of a Motel 6 in Palo Alto, for your information, is about $300 a night, so. So I, so I drove my motorhome up there, I spent the night in Elks Carke Lot and I just charged the city for mileage, so. Okay.
I have one more thing, Bob, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
I wanted to mention the, the Flower Festival Parade and I'd like to thank everyone that was involved and all the volunteers. These people are really working hard, running back and forth, and I thought it was really an enjoyable, enjoyable experience, especially with the weather. So I wanted to extend a thanks to those people that are doing all this volunteer work out there, working their tails out so people can have fun. In my area, on 4th of July, I stayed home, obviously, and the whole area there, people were having fun and just sitting out there in their lawn chairs and things. I didn't see anything, you know, I'm sure there's different things happening within the city, but I want you to know in my area, people were happy out there with their lawn chairs out in the yard staring, you know, the ones that couldn't make it to school. There were some older people, we live in an area where there's some older people that probably didn't want all that noise, but I wanted to say, from my viewpoint, people were having a good time and were getting out because the weather was accommodating also, so.
Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, it's very good, I think it's nice, but I sure had a lot more comments of people about their dogs being wasted because of the noise. I had more comments in the last two days on how their dogs got hurt and got worried. So it's something we had to look at when we, next time we go.
Okay, with nothing else, with, this meeting will be adjourned to the Lawnpok City Council meeting on July 19th at 6:30 PM. Good night.